Next order of business is open forum. And I'd just like to make sure everybody's on the same page here. We're gonna vote about thirty minutes, open forum. We ask that you please keep your remarks to three minutes so we can get everybody an opportunity to speak that wants to speak. If we do not finish everyone, then we have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to do the same. So with that-
Kurt Donnelly?
Good afternoon, folks. Hi, my name's Kurt Donnelly. I was asked to come here today just to speak a little bit about institutional racism, and this is gonna be about the KKK incident that everyone's aware of. Certainly, when that one supervisor did that act, that was an act of individual racism. It was stupid. It was hurtful, of course, to the one person that that happened to. But what institutional racism is, which is essentially laws, procedures, traditions, anything that tends to hurt one group over another, especially a group that's in a minority position or in a weaker position. Where the institutional racism came in is when the senior people— I understand we're not gonna come back and punish this guy twice, there's no double indemnity—but when the senior people who were supposed to come in, seeing the personnel manual, knowing that he should've been fired, decided, "You know what? He's a friend of our club. We're just gonna pass on this." Well, that there was institutional racism, because that told seventy thousand people in St. Petersburg that this is no big deal and the city's gonna let it go. That is problematic. So I think what you need to do is review the people that decided to punt on this issue and take a good look at them. They might be really good at their particular jobs, but clearly they showed a lack of judgment in that. Furthermore, on this topic—it came to my attention just recently—that some of the lowest-paid employees in the city—the, you know, the full-time employers are below fifteen dollars an hour, which is living wage—are asked to pay up front in some departments for safety gear that they're required to have in order to do their job, or else they get in trouble. Well, eighty, ninety dollars for steel-toe shoes may not sound like much to us, but when that's five percent of somebody's salary, and then the city may pay them back in thirty days, well, that's ridiculous. If it's required and it's safety, the city needs to furnish that up front and not expect the lowest-paid people in the city to fit the bill for the city. Those are my two comments. Oh, one last thing, and I'll run away before I run out of time. My understanding is you all intend on doing a climate survey of the water department. Well, since the people that decided not to punish this person were not in the water department, they were senior and above that, you really need to go citywide. My understanding is different departments all throughout the city are living in a gotcha culture. We have middle management that are theoretically being protected by a good old boy club, and the only way you're gonna root that out is if you do a city-wide climate survey. And take it serious, and take the results serious, or else you're never gonna get this cancer rooted out of here. New rule: taxpayer money shouldn't be paying for a good old boy club. Thank you.
Rick Smith?
Hello, counsel. I'd like to say I'm in favor of move to amend too. Just—I'm here on another thing, but definitely in favor of that. I am speaking also to the recent reports in the paper, the KKK incident, and the racial stuff that's going on to the city—in the city. Institutional racism is a part of it. What that really means—and it means to me, and I've had to think about this a lot within the last three weeks—is being a white father, I do not have to talk to my son about how to act with the police so they won't get shot and killed. Every black parent has to do that. That's institutional racism, is I have the privilege of not having to do that. The incidents—recent incidents in stormwater is another good example of that. I don't know if people have seen the city's actual report on this. If you haven't, I'm happy to give you a copy. It points out some very disturbing things. It sustains the facts—the sustains—or partly sustains the following facts: There is racial tension in the department, sustained; that management is not disciplined white foremen according to progressive discipline standards, et cetera, et cetera, sustained in part; allegation that black employees are not offered training or work assignments fairly is sustained in part; allegation black employees are not hired and/or promoted at the same rate as white employees, sustained in part; Robyn Turner will be speaking to you in a minute, somebody that has been working in an acting foreman's position for a year; also another union member of ours, Andre Allen, also a steward, been working for three years in that position, and should be, according to the city rules and regs, put in a foreman's position. So off this nice investigation, written by the city, not by us, which says, yes, all these things are wrong, there's one thing missing. What are you gonna do about it? Not there. I think that's a problem. I don't know if counsel has the authority or—to do anything about it, but you do have the moral obligation to kind of think about this and see if we can all move together. We're not indicting anybody personally over this stuff. What we're saying is, city recognizes the problem, the workers recognize a prob—there's a problem. Let's write in at the end of there, here's how we're going to take care of it. That's it. Thank you.
Robin Winn?
Rick got the Times wrong. My name is Robin Winn, and I represent the union workers in the city. I was here last week and couldn't speak because of policies and procedures. I was here on the wrong Thursday. It's ironic we can't stick to policies and procedures for meetings, but when it comes to people's lives, you sit and do nothing. You saw in the St. Pete Times, the KKK incident with the mayor, Christman, and Gary Cornwell, Mike Connors, we met with this issue, and they done nothing. You sighed and swept it under the rug, all you city officials, because you knew about this and did nothing. You swept it under the rug. Now, something should be done with management. You did nothing about that. So we went to the St. Pete Times. They said—they did something about it. They broadcasted it. This city promotes institutional racism. How can you turn your back on an issue like this? I have been punished for speaking out on this issue. I have been acting foreman for over two years. My department director cut my position for speaking out on this issue. Unfortunately, I work for Jerry Fortney and Mike Connors. They want me to take the same job—take a test for the same job that I'm acting foreman in right now. We have a zero-tolerance rule we just implemented on sexual preference, race, and now we're scrambling, taking tests for sensitivity classes. You can't teach a person—you can't teach a person how to be—not to be a racist taking a sensitivity class. Come on, y'all. Y'all gotta do something about this. That's not gonna happen, not in St. Pete. They just had an argument today in that class. This city is big on racism. There's more to this city than going to some baseball games, cutting ribbons, making appearances. We have real issues here. We have policies and procedures to follow. We must enforce. Mayor Christman, he failed us on this one. Where's the equality and justice in this city? Thank you.
Kevin Jackson?
Hello. It's my first time ever doing something like this, so I'm a little nervous. But it's kind of—I'm following the back of Robin, and I want to thank Robin for inviting me too, because I need north about this. But hello, my name is Kevin Jackson. I'm employed by the city of St. Petersburg for six and a half years in traffic operations. At one time, I loved what I do. I would even take work home sometimes to do it, without even worrying about getting paid for it. I just—I just love what I do in traffic operations. But now I wake up every morning in despair, praying I can make it through another day at work. At work, I go by 44191. That's my designation in traffic operations. And if you want to know, that's my employee number. The new supervisor, Tim Vatney, has spread the word that I have been targeted for termination. I have been upper management concerning this, and was told that I hate Tim Vatney, and I was referred to EAP. Upper management has proof of Tim Vatney singling me out for various issues that my white coworkers have not been. And by the way, it's only seven of us in traffic operations, and I am the only black man there. Every day I come to work, I'm under the constant fear and threat of termination. Tim Vatney has lied on me, belittled me, and disrespected me more times than I care to mention. But all that has happened is him—to him is getting a good talking to. He caused a citizen to fall and hurt himself. He has another employee do his work for him, and of course rewards him with overtime. He even had the same employee take pictures of another employee's work in order to get back at the employee for signing a statement where he told us, "He does not care what the director says, Jerry Fortney. He is doing things his way." And I'm like with Robin saying, "How would sensitivity training work when the person or people that are committing racist acts are still in the same position? If I did not do my job, you would fire or demote me." But still, you keep the same people in charge that are doing what you say there's zero tolerance for. Now, we all have to go to sensitivity training for the few that are the real problem. Thank you.
Charles Nims?
Good afternoon. I'm here to also support Ms. Robin. My basic thing is this, is that there's so much been going on in our city and in our departments, where people are struggling each and every day trying to just work. I worked with some guys a couple of days ago. I talked with some guys just to try to encourage them to do better, to work together, to respect one another. We got so much stuff going on that it's crazy to me, that we would talk against each other, we would not work together, we would just not support one another. All this stuff is going on just because somebody has a mindset of doing things their own way. And basically, all what we're—what I'm trying to do—I had a picnic last week for all our sanitation workers, which turned out great. We got a chance to fellowship, we got a chance to communicate, we got a chance to talk about things. We're doing better. We're doing better. But there's so much other things that needs to be done from upper management to help us along the way. I'm doing my part, that's encouraging others, asking them to work together, and we need some help to help us do a better job. Thank you.
No more speakers at this time.
No more speakers.
If I could ask if—we could get some report back from the mayor or the deputy mayor on this, not necessarily today, but soon. I mean, these are candidly pretty serious allegations. We'd be happy to do that. I think, as you all know, we—and as several of the speakers have indicated, we have started cultural competence training within the stormwater department, water resources department. We're looking to maybe extend that out to another couple departments in the near term. We're currently working on a request for proposal to do, as Mr. Donnelly had suggested, a citywide climate survey of all our folks, and based upon the results of that survey, design a citywide, more customized cultural competence program that we intend to roll out to all folks. That'll take a little longer because of the process, but that piece at least is all in motion and moving on. We'd be happy to brief you on where we are in terms of changes that have also been recommended and are currently being implemented in the stormwater department and the traffic operations division. So we can do that for you. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so you will be getting back?
We will get back.
Okay. Mr. Aaron?
Yeah, Gary. What I wanted to ask you was, is there—I know you got this training going on, but is there retaliation in the upper ranks against people for speaking out for something they didn't even do? Is that happening, or is the city monitoring that, or?
The city—the city clearly has a very succinct policy about retaliation, and that applies to all people, that if you ever participate in investigation, a grievance, or anything that you report, if you feel it's wrongdoing, that we won't tolerate retaliation at any level. In fact, a memo just went out, certainly within the stormwater department, from Mr. Connors, that basically reiterated that to all the employees in that specific department, because that allegation had been made, that some folks felt under pressure not to testify in a recent grievance hearing. So we've reiterated that and stressed that that applies to all levels of management, and clearly, it's not something that the city condones.
Now, does administration review these terminations, or are they just people at—will do whatever they want, force directors and all? Are there any terminations that—the administration review those and look at them on a case-by-case basis, or can they fire people at will? I mean, I know you're saying you got a memo going out, but my question really is, are they inspecting what they inspect?
We do. Again, anyone's free, if they feel they're retaliated against, to go to the human resources department, lodge a complaint, or if they feel, depending on where the retaliation is coming from, through their particular chain of command. To answer the other piece of your question, there are groups of employees, largely our management employees, that are at-will employees, that serve at the pleasure of the mayor, the remainder of the full-time employees, at least within the city, have specific grievance and appeal processes, either through the union representation process, or through the city's civil service board, and internal non-union grievance processes. So all those people have grievance processes, and for terminations, there is actually an appeal to a board of citizens, the city's civil service board, that hear that and make a decision.
Thank you.
For retaliation—
Councilmember Gertis?
For retaliation based on race or anything like that, any of the protective classes, there's also the EOC or, I believe, the county—
Correct. If it's racially based, then that actually is law violation, and they can—they can go take that to an outside agency.
Do we have a whistleblower policy?
There's a state whistleblower policy.
Yeah. I don't know, does we specifically have individual—retaliation policy kind of takes that into account, that if you're reporting in good faith, that you won't be retaliated against.
Again, you could take it directly to an outside agency. You don't have—
Councilmember Gertis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd ask, in the response, if we could get a specific answer to the issues of someone being an acting foreman for two years or one year, and what the policy is about someone acting for a time certain before a decision has to be made one way or another. I'd like to know what that is, what that policy is. I'd also like a response to this policy about buying safety equipment that's required for your job. If our policy is the employee needs to advance that, and we're gonna pass a new budget here in two weeks, I'd be more than happy to take a hundred thousand dollars and put it in a pot from which safety equipment can be purchased. I can't see advancing—I can't see making employees advance money for equipment, but—
Again, that's a negotiated benefit that's contained within the union agreements, so that's how that comes about.
Okay, so if you could tell me what the policy is, and then I can decide whether to try and do something in the appropriation process or not. Thank you.
Councilmember Cornell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's really important—my question that I have in regards, what steps do we take to make sure that employees know that if they feel uncomfortable with something, they could go to the EOC or the county? How do we let them know that? How do we communicate that piece of information?
It is clearly referenced in some places of our rules and regulations, which are disseminated to all employees. It actually is—that type of information is required to be posted on all of our bulletin boards in all of our facilities. That's actually federal and state law, that we have to post those particularly notices that provide employees of their rights. We try to post them at entrances, exits, break rooms, places where employees congregate, so that they—they do see those on a regular basis. And when we usually explain our grievance and appeal processes and such, it includes language in our policies that say that does not preclude them from taking their claims forward, if applicable, to the appropriate state or federal agencies.
Would it maybe be helpful to require that when people are processed, that there's a paper that they sign that goes in their file, so that way we know they're seeing that information? Because I think it's important that folks know that if you feel uncomfortable, and you feel uncomfortable to the point that you feel like there's nobody you can talk to in the city, that you can go to other agencies. And it surprised me, frankly—it surprised me that at some of the discussion that we've had, not with the water resources department, but with the police department, there were people that acted as if they never heard of that, according to what was said in the paper. Now, let me qualify it with that. But the fact is, some of those folks should've been the ones telling all the employees, "This is—these are your rights." And I just want people to know that they have a right to voice, and if they, for whatever reason, feel that the city system doesn't work for them, that they have other agents— I want to just—I just want that to be really clear, that we're letting people know that, that there's no doubt that we're communicating that to folks, that—and that because the supervisor may get busy, and may not notice that a poster didn't get put up, or something like that, I'd rather just make sure that we're telling each employee—I don't know, that's my suggestion. And I'll just say that I think that institutional racism, homophobia, sexism, any of it, we should be way beyond it, and I know that it's unfortunately an ongoing situation. And you know, when I worked in the recreation department with young people, that was sometimes a battle to remind them that there were certain things that were inappropriate in a workplace, and sometimes other—sometimes even to the point where especially young women would say, "Oh, they're not bothering me." And I said, "Well, whoa, whoa, everybody sit down," because it's not a matter of if you're bothered or not, it's okay. It's not okay. And if it happens, here's what I will do about it as the supervisor, because if I let that go, I'm creating an atmosphere of—which was all clearly explained to me in training, and so I know we—we have that training, and obviously, having the training doesn't mean that everybody's gonna utilize it in the correct way, but I think that's—I think dialogue is really important, and I think at certain points, certain actions are appropriate and are called for. But I think before we get to that point, as much dialogue as we can have, and as much understanding as we can create. But like, what I do when I talk to teenagers, I use this example all the time. Our police department had six cadets who were caught—and I'll wrap up—using the N-word. Three were white, three were African-American, and all six were fired. And when I talk to high school students, I use that example a lot, of you don't get to make up—you don't get to make up the—well, it's okay. If I think it's okay, it's okay. It's not okay. The city as an organization says no. And so I think—I think it's really important—I'm very sorry that people have to experience that pain. I think anybody—it's more than just the incident that happened, it's that every single person in the city that had to read that in the newspaper, that's hurtful, and I think we'll work on it. But you do have rights, and those rights will be honored, because you have rights to even go outside of the city if that's the way that you feel is going to be the best way to be heard, and those processes are in place for a reason, and that's to support you and to make sure that we don't have—don't have those kinds of problems. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Foster?
Thank you. I share my colleagues' concerns. I think these are very serious allegations. I think some of my questions have been answered, but as somebody who's spent a large part of my career doing cultural competence training and equity, working on equity issues, I'm curious, who is conducting the training at this time?
At this time, a gentleman named Buster Tokely, who has been doing those type of training classes for us for—I'd say probably—I'd say the last four or five years at least, and I don't hold me to the thing, but he has been doing that on a regular basis. We do anywhere from four to six or seven classes a year, I believe he's been doing that, and actually has been fairly well-received. He's currently under contract, and so it was something we could put in place fairly quickly with the follow-up on the RFP process, so—
But it is an external person?
It is an external person, correct. He's a contractor, it is not done by city staff.
Okay. And then, everyone is required to participate? There's no—is upper-level management required to participate?
It is our intention that all employees in the affected departments are going to go through the training at all levels, yes.
I think—and you've assured us that there's going to be a broader look at this, but I—I do think that when these types of allegations come up, and there's—I don't want to call it uneven, but you're providing the training to one department because that's where the allegations came up. It can be viewed as punishment in some ways. So I support the idea of a broader climate survey for the entire city. This isn't the first department that has had claims of racial tensions. I certainly know that this was brought to all of our attention on the campaign trail, so this isn't news today.
And just as a follow-up to that, and forgive me for interrupting, but we did realize that we're not doing solely one department. At this time, we're doing water resources department and stormwater department. Those are actually two different departments. We also reached out to the union representatives and asked them if they had to prioritize for us a couple other departments where we would like to go while we are doing this short-term training for the immediacy. They've given us a couple other departments that we're now looking at, so we're probably gonna reach out and start going to a couple other departments. So we haven't targeted the single department. While we're doing this, we're trying to not only address what has been identified at this point in time as a potential area of problem, but kind of going out and say, "Where else might we have something? Let's get ahead of it, if we possibly can, and at least try and get the training going in those areas." So that's underfoot, and we'll be rolling that training as far as we can get it to some other departments in the short term.
Okay. And I—I recognize that this might fall into that slippery slope place of where counsel is not the executive of the city. But I think actually Rick Smith's comment about, you know, "Have you seen the entire report?" I feel like that's something—you know, these are very serious allegations, and in the future, I think it might be nice if counsel were to receive that kind of documentation when something is being brought forward to that level, that a survey needed to be done. I think it would be helpful for us to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I agree with my colleagues that this is a—obviously, a serious allegation and something that we, as a city for our long-term well-being, need to address upfront. Kind of following up with Amy's question as to what counsel's real power or authority would be in this, other than we have the authority to do management evaluations, other than that authority of doing a management evaluation, which will be discussed at BFNT in either the end of September or beginning of October. What other, if any, other authority do we as counsel have on such issues?
Issues such as this, it's—they're really the mayor's domain. You can request certain things, you can suggest certain things, but in the end, it's up to the mayor to decide what's—what is going to happen. Again, I'd like to emphasize, there are many avenues for employees who feel that they are being discriminated against, either through retaliation or direct discrimination. And there are outside agencies that they can go to. You don't have to depend on city workers to make those determinations. Again, you are limited in what you can do as far as—I mean, you can—again, you could take a stand as far as, you know—which I'm sure you already have done, really, is take a stand, you're against discrimination, you're against health, all this type of stuff.
So from an action item, really, the only real authority that we would have would be able to do a management evaluation?
A management evaluation could touch on that, yes.
And Dr. Cornwell, I'd ask that you do the best you can to give us a full report as counsel before the meeting that we have, our management evaluation discussion, so that we have the opportunity to see what administration has done in addressing this issue, to see whether or not we, as counsel, want to go further in a management evaluation.
That's no problem. We will do that.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Rice?
Thank you, Chair. This incident is indeed painful and shocking, and— This incident is indeed painful and shocking, and thank you for everyone who came to speak on this and to also serve the role of continuing to educate on what institutional racism is. My thoughts are, Mr. Fornwell, that we take this opportunity during this climate survey to perhaps think about the long and serious conversation, or suggest to the mayor to consider if this points to the need for a diversity commission or creation of a diversity office or officer. And this is not an unusual type of office in major cities or in large companies. It could send a strong message, it could help create the blueprint for an inclusive decision-making process. Such a role could focus on diversity hiring, training, education, leadership. It could cover policy review to ensure equity in our regulatory development process, vendor contract review and the RFP and fulfillment process, to ensure equity in our choice of contractors, and of course, the incredibly important role of community outreach and advocacy. This would enable us, I think, to have a little bit more context in being more proactive in working with our employees and the community to reduce the likelihood of a horrible accident like this incident happening again, but also to provide the framework for a swifter response that speaks of the values of our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Cornell.
Yes. Again, I just think, you know, from my perspective and my professional experience, that yes, we want incidents addressed and addressed appropriately and quickly, and we want incidences not to happen, but I think there needs to be a much bigger, you know, in my view, if I was, you know, just in opinion, not trying to violate any charters or anything, but...
Recall, recall.
You know, in my view, yes, send that message, but if people still feel the same way, but they say, "Oh, my gosh, just don't say that, because you get in trouble for saying that," that's a very superficial level of having dealt with it. And I think what we have to do is create a safe space where people can talk to each other, and where people can understand each other, and where people can say, "Hey, you know, I thought this, but now I'm able to talk to you and see this." You know, where you can say that to each other, and maybe get through some of those misunderstandings, and sometimes people can't get to that level because we get to an environment where everybody's so afraid to talk to each other. So I hope that we set a standard of, yeah, this kind of horrible thing is completely unacceptable, but having dialogue with each other and getting to understand each other is a good thing. So I just hope we manage to have that dialogue. I'm done.
Okay. Councilmember Newton.
Yeah. Gary, normally, you have a chain of command, and employees go outside of that, they usually get chastised or get in trouble. How does that work with something like this? You're supposed to go to your immediate supervisor and on, on, on. How does that work with an incident like this, within the city? I'm not talking about outside agency.
It's going to depend upon the specific incident and who the person has, excuse me, a complaint with. In this particular instance, the complaint came from the employee to the human resources department. I think the union was involved at the same time, but it came to the human resources department, so it did not go up the chain of command. We actually have policies that indicate if there is things that border upon basically illegal types of activities, sexual harassment, racial harassment, discrimination, et cetera like that, they can report it to their supervisor or someone through the chain of command, but our policies also obligate that particular supervisor to then report it to human resources so that there is, again, I'm not going to argue objectivity, but at least so there's a department that's charged with investigating those types of things outside of the department where it initiated to be involved in that particular discussion and resolution. So in most cases, I guess to answer your question of incidents of this type, although it may be reported up the chain of command in the department, there is an obligation by policy to take that to HR.
So it won't be swept under the rug and nothing like that?
To the extent the policy is followed and HR becomes aware of it, no, it would not be.
What is the policy on blatant racial displays for employees? What happens?
I mean, that wouldn't be prohibited. Again, that would fall under the same policy. It depends upon what it is, what occurred, how it occurred. Every incident is going to be a little different, everybody has an explanation.
I'm speaking to this incident. What is the policy? What happens in something like this, with an employee that does something like this?
In this particular instance, there's an investigation that's conducted, witnesses are looked, tried to find, the individual did its interview, the individual is aggrieved as interviewed, witnesses are interviewed, department management's interviewed, we look at any past incidents that may have occurred. Ultimately, when that investigation is concluded, there is a panel that's convened to review the results of the investigation, which typically includes the HR director, the department director of interest, the department director's administrator, a representative from the legal department, and the city administrator. They review that, offer their insight to the department director. Under our policies, ultimately, the department director is the ultimate decision-maker in that particular instance.
There's no policy, there's no flat-out policy for incidents like this, is that what you're saying?
There are guidelines.
It comes back to the same individual that's over that person? So I mean, that wouldn't be a policy, it'd be a call thing, whether you want to do something.
Every incident is looked at individually. There are guidelines for...
One like this one, not everyone. One like this one, I'm trying to figure out what happens.
That is exactly the procedure that was followed in this case. That is policy, and that is reduced to writing in our policies, yes.
And my other question is, you said that safety equipment is usually, they get that through the, that's negotiated through the CB agreement?
Yeah, the union contracts, I believe almost all of them in some form or fashion recall for some level of reimbursement for either safety equipment or other equipment. And basically, there's usually there's a timeframe and a maximum allowance. I don't know exactly what they are anymore, but you know, once a year, you're allowed to purchase new safety shoes or something, and be reimbursed up to an amount of $75, $80, I don't know what. And typically, what they said is the way it works. Individuals typically want their own types of equipment, so we don't just supply that to them. Different types of people want different types of shoes or whatever, so they go out, purchase whatever they feel, as long as it meets the safety standards. They submit a receipt to us, and we process that back, reimburse them for that.
But that's done by their leadership from their local or their...
That's what's been in the negotiated agreements for as long as I can remember. I don't know as we've been asked or tried to negotiate, just have the city provide that. They may have been asked at some point in time, but that's a longstanding practice for virtually all the collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you. Okay. In closing, just want to say that I know where the city comes from, and this is the last thing that we need on our table, because it's not right. And the investigation is in process, it will be done, and I think we need to allow that to happen. And when we get the end results back, then we can vet it out some more. You know, it's hard to predict anything because I don't know all the facts, and a lot of people I hear don't know them either. So let's let it go through its course and see what happens.
There are...
And I think you'll get back with us and let us know. I can only tell the public out there that any form of racism is not tolerated.
It clearly is not tolerated by this administration. I think last week, deputy mayor put a memo out to that effect, and as I said, there is an action plan going forward, not only for the climate survey, but to specific actions within the departments, and we will report that back to you.
Okay. And so as, I think right now, that's where we're going to leave it, until you get back with us, month, two months, I don't know how long it can take.
You'll have your report on the current after-action items probably next week.
Gary, let me mention something else that's kind of bothersome to me. It's the earliest this morning, people were arguing in a diversity class. Who governs that? How does that work?
Obviously, I was not there. The class has started this morning. I do know that Mr. Tokely runs an interactive class, and I know that because we were looking to increase the size of the class a little bit, and he was fairly adamant that he wanted to keep them down to a manageable level. He does, and it's been a while since I attended one of his classes, but he does involve a lot of interaction among members and trying to do some of the same things that Councilmember Cornell was alluding to before, where getting people to try and talk to each other and say, "I think this way because," and "What would you do if I did this?" And so he involves a lot of interactive stuff, and I don't know the nature of what went on this morning, but the fact that sometimes that gets a little heated is sometimes a good sign rather than a bad sign. And again, I don't know the specific nature of it, so I'm not judging this specific instance. But that's part of what is tried to accomplish, is to get people expressing their opinions and how they feel about what other people have said and done.
I just don't want them to express it physically, I'm a little worried about that.
No, I don't want riots going on in the classroom, but I'm thinking part of that's by design.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, consent agenda.